I'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the meeting of the city of Seward, Nebraska, governing by the City of Seward by the Nebraska Act of Conducting Business. A copy of the Nebraska Act is displayed in this room as required. Disclosure of recording process is also posted, I believe. If not, we are recording. The signature sheet is available for you, city citizens, council. If you wish to speak, just indicate that you desire, and then we will call one near the appropriate time. You'll be asked to state your name and address for the clerk's record, and then your remarks for five minutes. All remarks should be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city reserve has the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Alyssa Hendricks.
Here.
Carol Miller.
Here.
Sid Camprich.
Here.
John Singleton.
Here.
Chris Schmidt.
Here.
Jonathan Wilken.
Here.
Jessica Holtman.
Here.
Ellen Beck.
Here.
Alright, first item this evening is the draft minutes of April 20th, 2021.
Move through.
Second.
Move by Singleton, second by Hendricks. Motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Camprich?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Holtman?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Alright, the next two items consist of this evening's consent agenda.
Move through.
Second.
Move by Singleton, second by Schmidt. Motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Yes.
Camprich?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Holtman?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Alright, we have one appointment this evening. It's the appointment of Derek Bargman as the Seward City Clerk and resources director. Welcome, Derek. Would you like to say anything?
I was gonna introduce him.
Oh, Greg, would you like to introduce him?
Oh, thank you. I'd like to introduce Derek, and there he is. I'll have him speak in just a second. Went through a large-scale review interview process. Involved some city department heads, and then also the mayor. As we know, this is all simply by state statute. An appointment by the mayor with an approval by the city council. Derek is actually a Seward resident now, and has been for a little while here, along with his wonderful wife, Molly. Derek currently resides at the University of Nebraska, and he can kind of talk about the work that he does in the research grants program there. He also served as a deputy town clerk and contracts manager in Fort Myers Beach, Florida, town of about 7,000 residents, but swells to nearly 50,000.
Yeah, 40, 50,000.
Forty to 50,000 when the tourist season is in. He also worked for, in his previous life, SEND, so Southeast Nebraska Development District. He is originally from Pender. There you go, I got it. I didn't hear you drop the thing. And also has a master's in public administration as well in regards to some of his background in international business, specifically German. So Derek, let us know a little bit more about yourself.
Yeah. First off, I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to be here tonight. Just feel really humbled and honored just to be in front of you and to assume this role and to get to work, you know? It's been my desire ever since I saw an email right before I got out of undergrad. I saw an email and said, "Do you want to change the world?" And that day, I didn't really know what I was gonna do. I had my international business degree set to get in a few weeks, and I thought I was going to travel around the world speaking German, working for a German company. And I saw that email that day, and I just said, "Wow, I should maybe think about doing something in public service." And through that email, it just kind of led me to deciding to get a couple of internships, working for economic development districts, kind of getting a role in Nebraska and learn about that, and then going on to get my master's degree. And while I was in Florida, I was lucky and blessed enough to get an opportunity at Fort Myers Beach, and that just kind of showed that I really wanted to work in this field. So, you know, we moved back here when we were having our first son, who's now six, in his kindergarten. Because my wife works for the state of Nebraska, and she got an awesome job back here. So we moved back here and wanted to raise our family in Nebraska. You know, I liked my job in Florida, but, you know, we wanted to move back here and raise our son here. And I needed a job, so I said, "Okay, who's hiring?" So I found one at UNL, and right now, I manage creative contracts there. It's about 350 of them that I do right now, from all different kinds of sources, federal, non-federal. And so that's like invoicing, reporting, monitoring expenses, kind of telling professors they can't spend this on that. You know, just kind of being a rule follower for them. You know, I really was pretty happy where I'm at. I've been working from home for over a year now. We're still shut down our office there, so I still work at home every day. Was really happy working at UNL, you know, been there seven years. And one day, I was just scrolling through Facebook, and I saw City of Seward's hiring for this position. I was like, "Wow, I better apply." Like, this is right up my alley, what I want to do. I mean, this is the town that I live in, and we've really enjoyed it here since we've been here on July 1st. Everybody's been awesome in town. We've got to know so many people, and applied for it, and had a couple of really great interviews. And really was great to get to know Mr. Butcher and Mayor Eckmeyer. Really enjoyed getting to know those guys a little bit more, and just look forward to working with all of you. I promise to do my best, and it's gonna take me a little bit to fill in for Bonnie and get up to speed with where she was at, but, you know, in a few months, I believe that I'm gonna be where she was at, and just have different eyes on it, take it to a different place. So excited to be here tonight. Thank you all.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Greg, do we have a lot of that?
Um, we have a good number. We had to whittle it down just for interviews, which was less than half, but we have a good number. Again, we had kind of that silo. Either you had HR experience, or you had some sort of municipal experience. No mix of the two where it crossed over. And so all of our finalists, we had a great group of finalists. All the finalists were Seward-based. We were really excited about that. And so it is a very competitive process, multi-rounds of interviews with different elements in the management team, the administration.
Any other questions or comments, or was we didn't gain a motion?
I'll move through. I'll start early.
Move by Beck, second by Kinderman. Your motion in a second is in for discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Camprich?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Holtman?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Alright, I'm gonna check and see how technology works now. Next, we have administrative items. We have recommend Angela Coffey as manager of Gettin Split, 536 Robert Street. This is a retail class C liquor license.
Yeah, just sort of updated to the Gettin Split recommended manager. I believe the PD report is included in your packet. Answer any questions you have, but didn't see anything that was anything concerned us. Move over.
Second. Move by Schmidt, second by Singleton. Motion in a second is in for discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Camprich?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Holtman?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Alright, next we have the presentation and acceptance of the 2019-2020 annual audit.
Alright, now we're gonna try this. So we worked on this earlier. Jonathan's my moral support here. So we have Marcy, and I'm gonna, oh, I gotta turn on the sound system. Alright, Marcy, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can hear you. So we have you coming through the speaker system here in the room. We couldn't figure out a good way to give you a view of the thousands of people that are here this evening. But some of the ground rules is on questions. We couldn't get a microphone situation figured out with the audio above. So if you have a question for Marcy, I may have to reiterate it, but hopefully my computer mic will pick it up. But if not, we will make sure that I reiterate it back to her. Other than that, I will note Nick Wolf is in the room. So if we need to rely on some of his expertise, he's sitting in the back there. Hi, Nick.
Hi.
And I will turn it over to Marcy. So there you go, Marcy.
Okay. Thank you very much. Hello, everyone. Thank you for letting me join you on Zoom tonight to review the September 2020 audit. And what we're going to do is focus on a two-page benchmarking spreadsheet that we put together. Those of you that have been on the council before are used to our presentation. But this benchmarking spreadsheet basically takes financial information from the audit financial statements. The page numbers are shown on that particular form, and it really compares you guys to other peer cities your size across the state of Nebraska. We work with about 70 different municipalities across the state, and so there's a pretty good pool of cities your size that we use to make comparisons to. And we always tell people, there are reasons why a city may have more or less in certain categories, and a lot of it's about your prioritization. But I think it's always just useful to have those comparisons. So that's what I'm gonna focus on. But before I get into that, the actual bound audit report itself has an unmodified opinion. That's always what you want when you go through an audit. It says the financials present fairly without exception. Now, I'm not planning on running any visuals. I'm just gonna focus on the spreadsheet, so the benchmarking spreadsheet. And I think Greg, they don't have a copy of that. It was in their packet, right? I saw an agenda that was in there, yes, yes.
I'm simply shaking heads, so.
No, no.
And Marcy, if you do want to do, I think I made you a host, so if you do want to do a screen share or anything, you're able to do that possibly.
Yep, and I didn't prepare having those E and D, so I'm just gonna roll this way, Greg.
Alright.
So starting out here with the benchmarking spreadsheet, what it shows is you guys' population. So this is comparing to about a dozen cities of your size across Nebraska, and it shows that your valuation this year, 2020, came in at about 73,000 per capita. And you can see that runs ahead of your peer group average. And so you guys have a higher valuation, and you can see historically also, we have five-year data, so you can see how this city has trended over that time. So we've seen an increase in that valuation. And again, you're running about 15,000 higher per person than your peer group average. The first item on this spreadsheet, item number one, talks about unrestricted net assets or net position compared to total. And so what unrestricted net position is, is basically equity that you guys have some flexibility with, because it has not been restricted, committed, or assigned to some specific purpose. So it really is the equity that allows you guys to be flexible and respond as needed to projects that may come up. We recommend that cities run around 25% to 35%, depending upon what type of business or what type of activity it is. And you can see for 2020, you guys come in right at those recommendations in all categories. So you're in good shape from the unrestricted net positions category. The second item there talks about your top five revenue sources for your governmental activities. And again, compared on a per capita basis, we see your sales tax came in at 3.10% this year. That was up about $50 per person from the prior year. It's running similar, a little bit ahead of your peer group average. Your property taxes per person came in less than your peer group average, but you can see that's up a bit compared to prior year. State allocation came in very consistent historically, and you guys run behind your peer group average, and then it's, you don't receive municipal equalization because your, like, your levy asking is a lower amount, so you don't receive that many equalization. Your grants and contributions, 2020 was a big year for the city of Seward. That jumped up compared to where we've been historically, and it brought you pretty comparable to where your peers ran during 2020 as well. And then finally, franchise taxes. You can see that's been very consistent for you guys historically. You guys do run ahead of your peer group average on that. State allocations, I already mentioned. You guys don't receive municipal equalization, but you can see highway allocation, you've been very consistent historically. You run a bit behind your peer group average, but very comparable. Item number four talks about the dollars you spend for your governmental activities on a per capita basis. And so for admin, you can see, and again, if you look back over the five years in all of these categories, you see they're very consistent historically. Admin, you guys run much less than your peers on a per-person basis, 39 versus 90 on average for the other cities your size. Cemetery, civic, the pool where you can see are very similar. Your fire and rescue and your public safety, your police, run a little bit lighter than the peer group average, but again, historically very consistent there. And again, I always want to mention, especially under item number four, you know, there's no right or wrongs on these per capita. A lot of times, it's just the focus of the city, what they prioritize dollars into, and slight variations in population can impact those dollars pretty significantly. Item number five was your outstanding geo-debt compared to valuation. And we say anytime a city can have less than 3% of your valuation in outstanding geo-debt, you're in excellent financial shape. And you can see, you're about half that, at 1.43%, so excellent on the governmental debt side of things. The second page there, item number six, we have your unassigned fund balance compared to your general fund expenditures. So this says, how much unassigned equity basically does your general fund have compared to what it spends annually? We like to see at least 40% there, so you have adequate cash reserves available to continue operating. You guys can see you came in at about 89%, so very strong in that general fund. Your street reserve, your street cash, we like to see around 12 months. You can see that you guys always put your dollars back to work in the city of Seward into your streets. You have about 5.4 months, and that's been very consistent. A lot of times in cities, we'll see this build up significantly, maybe several years work, and then major projects that take it way down. You guys consistently put those dollars back into your streets, which is a good thing. Item number eight is your levy. And again, compared to your peer group average, you can see 0.31 is your general levy, and that compares to about 0.38, which is average for other cities your size. This is driven by your valuation. You have a higher valuation, so your tax asking is less. It also impacts that municipal equalization, as I mentioned earlier. We don't have that at-average tax asking, and so we don't look the extra municipal equalization.
Alright.
Item number nine is your net depreciable capital assets compared to original cost. This simply tells us how depreciated out are your capital assets. And what we like to see is having at least 35% of your original costs still out there and available to be depreciated. This tells us how close to emergency replacement status are you as far as all your capital assets? And you can see you're in good shape. Your governmental are about 55% depreciated out, and your business type about 42%. So business type are getting close. That's indicating you probably have some significant dollars, but you're always planning for that and building that into your rates and into your business-type cash reserves so you can continue those capital replacements. And speaking of those rates, item number 10 talks about your operating income for the utility funds. We like to target about a 15% operating margin, just in order to continue having those adequate dollars for replacement. We can see this year, your electric fund was kind of light, and it has been historically. It came in at about 3.9. We like to see that closer to 15. And so that's an area that may indicate maybe that electric rate does need some adjustment. Your water in Seward, very strong, at 31% and 20% respectively as far as the operating ratio compared to that 15%. Your debt coverage reflects, the electric fund has good debt coverage. It's over the 1.5 that we recommend. And your water, though, came in a little bit light this year. And so that's something we want to make sure that we have continued dollars there to service the debt in the water fund. But overall cash reserves, item number 12 speaks to it. And so based upon your annual expenditures, as well as any perceived need for upcoming capital outlay, we recommend that you have at least 2.1 million of cash reserves in your governmental general fund, and you guys were at 4.2. So again, very strong. That was reflected in your unassigned fund balance. That was reflected all the way through this particular benchmarking report. Your business type is right where we would want to be as far as cash reserves. We're recommending right at 11.1 million, and you're at about 10.8, so in good shape there. And again, that reflects the capital outlay that we anticipate will be upcoming in the near term for those utilities. So that's just kind of our summary. It kind of takes your entire audit report and builds it into some comparisons, as well as some ratios that I think you can use from year to year to see how the city is doing from a financial perspective. Does anyone have questions on those items before I hit just a couple of brief items in the audit report?
Questions? Looking around the room. I'm seeing shaking heads with no, so we'll continue on.
Okay. Alright, awesome, awesome. So the audit report, as I already mentioned, the big bound audit report on page three will have our audit opinion, and it was unmodified, as I mentioned. The management discussion and analysis, pages eight and nine, have some comparative information to the prior year. So we can see that overall for your government, your assets, liabilities, and equity all increased on page eight. And then page nine gives a nice little summary of revenues and expenses for your governmental funds compared to the prior year. And you can see your expenditures on that top table were up about 4% for the governmental funds, but your revenue increased a lot more. You guys had more charges for services, and then more operating and capital grants. It was a big year from the operating grant side with some additional COVID relief, but least presumptive payroll. Some of those grants were new. And then also, it was a big year from the capital standpoint as far as having some dollars flow in for some street projects and infrastructure projects that you guys had. So that was the main driver of that revenue being up. Also, your sales tax increased about 300,000. And I think a lot of cities saw that as more and more online purchases were made. A lot of the community saw increased sales tax, and so that was nice as well. Page 10 shows a comparison of your utility funds compared to the prior year. Your expenses ran very similar. Your revenues were up about 3,000 from the prior, oh, excuse me, 300,000 from the prior year. So again, just a slight increase there. And then your capital asset activity are shown on page 11, continuing on to page 12. There were a lot of dollars reinvested into your capital outlay for both your governmental as well as business type. And the table on page 12 shows that even net of depreciation, both your governmental and your utility funds increased as far as the net capital assets. So that's good. Page 13 summarizes your debt compared to last year, and it also shows that your debt increased. You increased about 2.9 million, or about 20% increase in debt. And it was primarily your governmental funds. You guys issued 4.7 million of some general obligation street and refunding bonds, and this generated about $4.2 million of low financing for some upcoming street projects. Okay? From there, I just want to jump back through the financial statements a bit. Page 16, I always think it's important when we're looking at your governmental funds to keep in mind, you know, it's one thing to look at what the cash balances are, but I feel it's always important to look down in the fund balance section and see what each one of those funds is either restricted, committed, or signed or unassigned for. Because that really tells you how many dollars you have flexibility with. So the unassigned really is unspoken for, whereas many of these funds are restricted for certain purposes. And you can see what those purposes are listed out on page 16. So I think that's always important to look at. Page 21, your utility funds. Again, I want to emphasize that operating income in the center of the page, we like to target about 15%. Your electric was running about 3.8. The water and sewer were both running in excess of 15%, so that's great. Cash flows, I think also on page 22 is a very important statement. If we look at the subtotals there, from operating with utilities, you guys brought in about $2.9 million worth of cash the first sub-term. You used 4.3 million in investing and financing activities. That was purchase of capital assets, 3.1 million, paydown of debt, 2.6 million, and issuance of some new debt, 1.6 million. And then also, you guys pulled some dollars out of CDs to the tune of about 1.2 million. So you brought in some cash from the investing activities. So overall, your cash stayed pretty even in your utilities, even though you had 3.1 million of low capital asset purchases and paid down debt of 2.6 million. So that's all good. The footnotes, I'm gonna just point out a couple of things. Page 45 and 46 list the detail of the O B 840 loans. There are 15 outstanding O B 840 loans at September 11th, so you can see the detail of those. Lot of good activity in that economic development going on in your community. And then also, we'll see further on in the financials, the TIF projects are listed out in here. Page 51 summarizes your debt. So you can see the additions to your long-term debt for both governmental as well as business type, and then the paydowns. And then the various debt issues are summarized for several pages in those footnotes between page 51 and about 58. Think it's always good to know what kind of upcoming cash flow you're gonna get from those debt obligations. That's shown on page 58. So over each of the next five years for your governmental, your business type, as well as your component units. The component units are the Airport Authority and the Library Foundation pulled into one, just as a reminder. But this shows what kind of cash flow is going to be required for those various debt obligations. Commitments on page 61, there were a lot of contracts, a lot of projects going on at year-end. The remaining commitments are detailed at the bottom of page 61, so we can see what kind of obligations were still pending on some of those projects that you were in the middle of at your year-end. And then jumping back a few more pages, the TIF projects are outlined on page 64. And so this lists just the projects that were on the 2020 TIF, that had 2020 TIF valuation. There are some additional projects that hadn't yet hit the valuation goals as of the 2020 valuation date. But you can see the various projects and the number of years remaining on those list from there. That really summarizes, and I do want to point out back on page 72, the component unit detail is shown there. So we'll see the Airport Authority, the Library Foundation, that information is presented on 72 and 73. And then as a governmental entity, we always issue our internal control of compliance report at the very end. Um, and for you guys, we'll have segregation of beauties listed as usual. And I always tell my clients, probably ninety-eight percent of our clients took this segregation of beauties comment. It's just life in Nebraska, we work with smaller organizations. And it's just a reminder to you as council, as you look at your financial reports, as you approve claims, just ask whatever questions come up. Because that does help with the segregation to have you guys monitoring that stuff and looking at that information as well. Uh, but overall, just, um, you know, I think Nick and Greg and all the staff are doing a good job. Uh, you've got a lot going on there in your community. I think these financials reflect that. Um, but but they do a good job of staying on top of the various compliance requirements and the things that need to be tracked in order to stay in compliance with all the various programs, um, and and funding grant funders that you guys work with. So I'll turn it back to you guys at this point to see if anyone has questions.
Questions? Council? Mayor? I won't say it's crickets, but. That's what we have. I'll I'll use the moment to thank, um, Marcy, thank you to your group. Uh, it was a big undertaking for them with COVID this year. Obviously, you can imagine when they get started on audits, they're back in the fall, right in the middle of October, November, that kind of area. Uh, it was a really a struggle for them and a challenge that they had to overcome that we were very happy to help with, uh, to get through this, um, process in kind of a different way. We're so used to them and their great staff coming into our building, knocking it all out and getting out. And we did basically the whole audit over the internet, online. So, um, it was a lot of work. So thank you to Marcy, thank you to our staff, and especially to Nick and the work that he does as the finance director and treasurer for the city of Seward. Um, it was a big undertaking and a little bit of pivot this year. So Nick, I don't know if you have anything else to add? Nick on the audit or anything that's going on in relation to that?
Sure. Um, I guess I would just say that the audit report's very indicative of the activities that we have going on at the city, you know? Lots of capital improvements in the electric fund and the street fund and, uh, and bonds related to those street projects. And then, uh, we've, uh, remained, uh, very consistent in our our cash reserves. And so, uh, you always feel confident in in, uh, moving forward with some of those projects. So that's that's really all I have to say unless there's any specific questions for me.
I don't know how much of that you heard, Marcy, because he's clear in the back of the room, but he said you're awesome.
Well, I didn't hear a thing, but Greg, I do want to echo what you said and thank Nick and the staff. I know this was a a lot of extra effort on their part as well, and we appreciate your patience. And getting us all the requested information, we did it remotely, but we weren't going to take any shortcuts. And so I know it was a lot of effort that that Nick and everyone put into getting us that information. So thank you.
All right.
Awesome.
Any last minute things from Marcy? Well, that will conclude it for us. I think the next thing in order would be to, uh, approve and place on file, is that correct, Mayor?
Yes, I think there's an acceptance of the audit, whatever. You know, motion to accept the audit?
I'd, I'll I'll make that motion. But I just want to say to Nick, to the department heads, to Greg, to the mayor, to whatever involvement you have. The way these financials look now versus back in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, it's awesome. You guys are doing good work.
Yeah, I guess I would like to think of this because I was there with Chris, uh, looking at a really dim and dismal, um, budget picture around twenty thirteen, fourteen down there. And, um, this is just my day, so congratulations and thank you.
Move to accept the audit.
Moved by Schmidt, second by Coulterman to accept the audit. Motion in a second to make your discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Campera?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Coulterman?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
All right. Marcy, thank you so much, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, you too. Bye-bye.
All right, next item number three, uh, discussion, consideration of plans and specifications for new fire tanker truck replacing a forty-two. Normalization to advertise for bids.
Uh, really quickly, this is a scheduled budgeted, uh, uh, piece of equipment and apparatus for us out of the fire department. I don't know all the technicalities, even though I did have to read through this one document. Uh, but I will turn it over, John, with the volunteer fire department will help fill in some of the gaps and tell you about this rig specifically.
Yep, the rig is replacing the old forty-two. When we bought the old forty-two, the chassis on that was actually, we probably shouldn't have ever bought it. It's too short of a wheelbase, it is a safety issue because it's top-heavy. And this one will be safer to run. It'll also give us more opportunity to, um, for anything as far as structures, because it will be a two thousand gallon, uh, also pump or tanker. So it'll give us a little more more tools to use in the event that we need it, so. But really for the safety aspect, it will be a huge improvement.
Thanks. Our plan for this one is we'll go out for bids pursuant to the information that's provided in the packet. And then we'll open those bids. And then once we confirm the bid number price, then we will probably be looking at local financing, I believe, in the budget we had over five years. That's how it's budgeted out. And so we'll go out to our local lenders to see what, uh, opportunities we have.
What can we do with the old one?
That'll go up, actually we'll get with Greg, it'll probably, uh, what happens out of a product for what sealed dibs like we did it last time we did it. Um, and I, if I remember, that went out to Shadron, to the wildland fire, I think is where it went. Um, you don't get as much in for a trade, um, the dollar amounts aren't there, um, but we'll put it up for sale. For bids.
So we're going to put up a truck that's a safety hazard?
Once it, you know, it it it's it's, what do you want to say? For us and people that drive big trucks and that, uh, you want something that, uh, different personalities different. So you know how people handle things, you want something that's, uh, going to hold the road better. Uh, but whenever they go out to say wildland fire or whatever, um, everybody knows how, they've got to go through the training to drive trucks and big trucks and handle safely. Um, but when you get into some of the tight areas and terrain that we get into, um, it'll be better to have longer wheelbase.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't disagree at all with you.
Yeah.
I'm just questioning that we're putting up for sale a truck that we consider to be a safety hazard.
It it's not a, it it's not a safety hazard.
It may not be for them.
But not for everybody, I guess you want to say.
Okay.
There you go.
There's a legal way around that.
It'll it'll be a huge improvement for us.
If you're going to buy this this type of equipment, they're going to understand what its capabilities are. They're going to understand what their needs are, so they can decide, um, what they feel is a good purchase for them. We just sell.
Yeah, it it's no different than us. Anybody that has a fire truck, you have to go through all the training, firefighter one, how to handle rigs. We even ourselves go through truck training. Every year we go down to the fairgrounds to set the cones, um, we do the driving. So, you know, we have to do the safety aspects for driving. So everybody gets behind it, even for the city of Seward, who went through the training. But it's just, like I said, with a shorter wheelbase, it'll be better. It adds that, what do you want to say, dependability when you go a little bit longer, it's it's a lot better. The truck is fine, but this will be better for us.
Any other questions or comments? I think we need a motion to, um, approve the plans, specifications, and organization to advertise for bids.
That's correct.
Move.
Second.
Oh, moved by Schmidt, second by Campera.
Motion in a second, make your discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Campera?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Coulterman?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Item number four, consideration of request for street closure parade permit for July fourth festivities. Uh, Fourth of July committee, uh, specifically under four A is a consideration of a resolution approving closing of the East Lane of Highway fifteen from Main Street to Seward Street, the North Lane of Highway thirty-four from Fifth Street to Sixth Street, and Highway fifteen, uh, Seward Street intersection during the parade and other festivities on July four, twenty twenty-one. Uh, typically, I can handle street closures when they come in, uh, but because it crosses a highway or involves highways, we need to, um, have a resolution from the council to send to the state for their for their records. So that's the reason why you get this every year.
It's the same thing, do you think? We haven't changed the route, so.
I'll introduce the resolution.
I hear news by Schmidt.
Resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number twenty twenty-one dash eight. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Uh-huh.
Second.
Moved by Campera, second by Coulterman.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Campera?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Coulterman?
No.
Beck?
Yeah.
All right, item number five, consideration of a three-year lease with Vinnie and Sons Ventures LLC, Magical Lights of Seward, for the use of Centennial Park for a holiday lights display, correct?
Uh, Vinnie, Vinnie sent his apologies, he's been not able to be here tonight. Um, but, uh, we've had discussions throughout the year. We did a kind of a wind down right after we finished the Magical Lights of Seward in Centennial Park. Uh, we met together with Vinnie and his family. We also met together with the Public Properties Department and also the Ag Society to discuss how it went this year. You know, was it a successful opportunity? I don't know if you drove down there, but if you drove down there at any point in time that was going on, I hope you could guess that it was very successful. They did a very good job. Um, and so Vinnie would like to house this for an extensive period of time here in Seward. Uh, and then that allows him to put in even more of an investment back into the product that he's going to continue to put out there. But by having the year-to-year, it's limited on how much that they can invest over time back into the to the project. And so we, uh, looked at this, the other thing that was involved in this new request was moving up the date from November first to October fifteenth to get access. We don't really have anyone in there. It's only being used for recreational purposes, which really is like walkers that get down that far. Other than that, we're not seeing a lot of, um, citizen activity in there. No camping or anything going on in the lake park or anything like that down there. And so that just gives him a little bit more time to set up what's going to be an even larger display, uh, each year. And so Public Properties was good with it. Vinnie said that one of the biggest issues that they would have to deal with is the leaves moving this up further. There's going to be more leaves falling that they're going to have to deal with. They're going to clean all those up themselves. They're going to take care of all that made it so we do normally anyway. So I'd know, they'll just take it on just like they do snow removal down there. Uh, Ag Society was good with it. They've been working with Vinnie this entire off year to come up with a plan. As you know, the Ag Pavilion and Harvest Hall were not really in activity last year for holiday festivities and, uh, celebrations and things like that, receptions. And so they put together an action plan of how they'll they'll work with that. So I think the biggest problem we'll have to deal with, and I know we're working with the P D and Chief Peters as well, is traffic. It is going to be, uh, estimate that Vinnie had, as he said, that every year that he's done it in his normal place before he came here, that he saw at least a ten percent increase in the number of cars that come through, approximately. And so we had tonight, it was getting all the way out to Highway thirty-four.
Right.
And so, um, we're going to have to continue to plan for that. We are going to wind them and snake them actually further into the fairgrounds. The fair has come up with a a plan for that, um, that will push them down closer to the river and then snake it even more, uh, which will help out. Um, but we didn't get any specific complaints. We have no complaints on in regards to light pollution or anything else. Um, it seemed like they were moving traffic through, it just did attract a lot of people. And also with COVID, it was something to do to get out, take your kids out and do something during the holiday season. That, you know, we just didn't have a lot of interactivities and sporting events going on where all the family could go do it. So we'll see how next year goes. But, uh, this was the request by, uh, the Magical Lights of Seward, who I'm going to bring for you through consideration.
Any questions or comments for the council? I want to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Clear.
Moved by Singleton, second by Campera.
Great, the motion to accept. Okay. Uh, motion in a second, please hold it all.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Campera?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Wilken?
Yes.
Coulterman?
Yes.
Beck?
Yeah.
Uh, next we have item number six, discussion of potential action upon call from concrete designs LLC for replacement of sidewalk brick with stamped colored concrete along the north side of Seward Street from Fifth Street to Sixth Street. Um, this was, Greg can give you some of the background on this. This stems from a downtown project, uh, from decades ago where, uh, they put the the brick along with the sidewalks in front of businesses. And so now some of that's starting to deteriorate. We've been getting questions about what the the, from the business owners as far as what do they, what is our expectation of? Do you replace the bricks as an alternative to stamp a brick, uh, like, you know, concrete, uh, stamping or something, or we care at this point. But I think when we discussed this, it was important that we kind of be on the same page so that whatever the decision is, that's uniform around downtown and you don't have different businesses doing different things. So Greg, do you want to add to that?
Yeah. This has been a continual one, I think, and it was my four-year anniversary just yesterday. But I probably fielded this question every single summer that I've been here, um, from different various downtown property owners. And essentially what happens is the concrete itself degrades. We get the freeze and thaw in the winter. The brick is a, almost like a facade brick. It's not your traditional brick like we have in the roadways around most of your buildings. It's not as thick. And so it's easy for water and moisture to get underneath it, get the freeze and thaw and it starts popping and cracking. Uh, and then the property owner comes to us finally and says, all right, what do you want me to do with this? You want me to put the bricks back? Can I just concrete it? And we've always said to this point, you need to put the bricks back. They need, it needs to be uniform. And so the approach that we brought here just for discussion purposes essentially, and some direction is, what would it cost if we changed that approach? If a whole block worth of people or somebody that wanted to cover the cost came and said, I don't like putting these bricks back, I want to do an alternative item. One of the alternatives that we came up with, and Tim can speak to this because he kind of led the charge in helping get this together, is doing stamped concrete. And you see kind of an example of what that would look like. It's an impression just over the concrete that gives a facade of brick, and it would be covered, similar to a brick styling color. Um, that's good. Again, you will have some indentations that are going to collect. Our biggest offender downtown is probably salt and de-icers and icy melts and things like that. That is what is degrading most likely for the most part, a lot of the downtown concrete. Now again, it could also be a bad match of concrete, and there's a lot of other elements. But once it opens up and then you have heavy traffic flow in the winter, you got a lot of pedestrian traffic coming in and out. You're trying to keep that ice off, and you just keep tossing that stuff down. You got areas maybe that are north facing, so the shadow of your building covers it up a lot more. It doesn't dry out as fast. You just keep tossing that stuff down, and it just obliterates concrete. And then once it gets started, you can see it starts to groove itself, and then it directs itself right into the brick. And then it's just a vicious cycle, and it ruins itself over and over again. Um, and so that's kind of what's going on down there right now. And there are some blocks that are pristine still, and there are some blocks, uh, like the north block on East Seward Street, right north of the courthouse, that it's, some areas are wiped out.
So walk me through how this would work. So my, in front of my building, hypothetically, it's broken up. So then rather than replace it with these bricks, this would be my alternative?
Our preference, our hard part with this right now is to do anything alternative to what we have now. The general recommendation or discussion we're having is we want to see a whole block bricks change.
Okay.
Because otherwise you're going to have this patchwork.
Right, that's what my question was.
Facade flat bricks with pressed colored concrete. The colors won't match, let's be honest right there. It's hard enough to match the bricks now.
Right.
Because of sun fade and everything else. Um, and so we really want to see a whole block done, and that's what we put quotas for.
That's what the quote is, for the whole block?
It's for the whole block.
Okay.
The next question is, how do you get a whole block on board? What involvement, if any, does the city have in it, and what is our direction? And so that's what we want to start bringing you, this discussion of what's going on downtown. Because business owners downtown are looking at us going, so is this just going to how it's going to be? And I have to keep doing this and putting those bricks back in there. But one of the biggest ones we've come up with, I will let you know, is we are going to put together a flyer or a an instruction sheet on maintenance. So. And try to make recommendations not to use certain products and what products would be good to try and eliminate what's going on with the degrade of the concrete. Because that's our biggest problem.
So my question, well, Vinnie and Tim can answer this because he's been in construction. So after five years, when this dye starts deteriorating and losing its color, are then we going to start letting people paint it red again?
It it's dyed throughout. The dye is put in, and it it's not just a face dye.
Okay.
It 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 penetrates the full, and this is going to be a full five-inch concrete of, in this case, the the brick stamped red throughout the five-inch. It's it's not just a surface layer, so it it shouldn't deteriorate.
So we'll put down requirements that they just can't do surface dye. We'll make sure that it's completely dyed.
Certainly mixed in the batch when they pour.
Sure. There's a lot of that, that they do the surface dye on top of it, and then after five or 10 years, then you lose the color.
Right.
So we've got to make sure we put them restrictions in when we do that, because otherwise somebody's going to come to you and say, hey, can I paint it red later?
Right.
So who who originally did the the brick work down there? And I say who originally did it, I guess who originally paid for it? Was it a city project or was it done by the business owners?
I think it was a D T R.
I, uh, my mom was on the committee, I remember that.
The businesses just paid for it?
But I guess.
The businesses contributed to that. I don't know the exact, um, arrangement, but I know that was part of the the, what I'd heard, of course, before my time. But what I, my setting was that there was some controversy regarding this project. I think there was some flooding that had occurred because some of the project didn't get done, and then it rained and some of the buildings basements may have gotten flooded, my understanding. Is that you, John?
Oh, yeah.
Do you remember the very name?
I remember very well.
And so some of them currently are right now.
Yeah.
What's that?
That some of them currently are right now because of the condition of sidewalks.
That was the first time as a council, and that's all happened. We got to tour the basements, and that was exciting.
Yeah.
And I remember, I think that's, some of the places, there's like a step, and there's like a, that's when those got put in as well.
The old coal shoots and everything, it was all fun.
I I want to say it was around twenty-five, thirty years, thirty years ago, probably.
It would have been.
Twenty, it's probably, it's well.
It'll be twenty here, come June.
Yeah, twenty-four for me.
Talking to some people, it was about twenty.
Okay.
So it was twenty-four for me, and it was happening when I first got on.
Yeah.
So I think so far this discussion, I think, is 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 really about, you know, what's the direction you want us to go with this? Do you want to go the stamped concrete route? And then we can work out the details later. And maybe that's something for the business owners, if they want to, uh, you know, find somebody, if they're going to pay for this. Do they want us to go out for bids on their behalf? You know, what does that look like? I I wouldn't just award a contract tonight. I would, I would give some flexibility.
It would have been.
Twenty, it's probably, it's well.
It'll be twenty here comes.
Had to be.
Twenty-four for me. Talking to some people, it was about twenty.
So it was twenty-four for me and it was happening when I first got on.
Yeah.
So far this discussion, I think, is, is, is really about, you know, what's the direction you want us to go with this? Do you want to go the stamped concrete route? And then we can work out the details later. And maybe that's something for the business owners if they want to, uh, you know, find somebody, if they're going to pay for this. Do they want us to go out for bids on their, you have, you know, what does that look like? I, I wouldn't just award a contract tonight. I would, I would give some flexibility and then, and make sure that this is what they want to do. Because I know one of the big criticisms that I heard from the last time was, I think, some of the business owners or building owners in particular felt like the plan was kind of forced on them and that they were kind of held hostage by some of that process. Whether that's fair or not, I don't know. I wasn't there, but that's one of the criticisms I'd heard when we were starting to look at doing downtown revitalization. That conversation brought up a lot of these memories of, and that's why you've noticed when we've been, been doing our programs, like with Jonathan's group, nothing's mandatory, nothing's required. It is, here is a program. If you want to participate, here's what's available. It's your decision. Do you want to apply? It's basically leaving it up to the business owner or oftentimes the property owner on whether they want to participate because part of the, 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 the comments I got was from this original project with downtown, that they did not feel like they had a choice.
So I think, I, I, I feel like we should do something with the brick. I feel like it's a safety hazard if nothing else and probably, like you said, causing some green issues. Um, I don't care how you move forward with it. I mean, I, I don't know if it's something in partnership with the business owners or if it's something that fits into a maintenance budget we have. I don't know. That's my question.
At this point, I think it's just, we just want some guidance on direction. If you're happy with the stamped concrete route?
The first question is, do you not want to go a patchwork route? Do you agree that letting every individual business owner do whatever they want from now on?
I think you have to have consistency.
And uniformity, at least on a, a block face.
Yeah.
Because if a whole block came to us and said, we want to do something different, but they're uniform and they all say, hey, we're all together, we all agree, or we'll, Betty Jean doesn't want to do it, but she's okay, but she doesn't want to pay, but we're going to cover her costs. But we're, we can get a project done on our block. Then we move forward, but we're like, what does that project look like? Because another alternative is get rid of the brick entirely. It's concrete. Somebody offered that up and said, just saw cut it out and go four feet back a curb and then do four feet of concrete and just get rid of the bricks on block.
I didn't know it needs to be five. So then you would have, what, so what's the purpose of the brick aesthetic? Is there like a certain reason for that, that if we did decide to have them all redone, that it couldn't just be concrete?
I think Mike knows a little bit of why that, not specifically why the city of Seward